We'll do the 8th in Burke County on Monday, but we've done the 7th so far this year. This is my 58th town hall meeting overall since you elected me to Congress. And I want to tell you that August is an opportunity for America to speak out. And we have to do so in a concerted way to make sure that the people in Washington and the people running for office even understand where the American people are, what they want and what they don't want. And for those of you who want to have input on what our agenda should be for the fall election in Washington, there's an opportunity. It's called America Speaking Out. And you can log on to a website and participate, saying what you like and what you don't like, and ask our elected officials in Washington for -- tell them what you want them to do. And also, equally important, tell them what you don't want them to do. And so, we have a board up here, Americaspeakingout.com. And tonight, for the first time, we're trying new technology. Because a lot of people can't -- still can't get out, even though we do town hall meetings in all the counties. They can't get out and be there in person. So, right now, we're streaming this live on the Internet. I would ooh or ah, but I'm not sure if it's going to work or not. But we're doing it on Ustream.TV. You can come -- you can look on our website afterwards at mckinry.house.gov and actually see the recording of this town hall meeting. And it's being streamed right now, live. And Michael Babiac, who's my new media director, is behind the desk there, making sure it's working. So, I know there's a lot of stuff on the Internet, but I just ask you to keep your language to what would make your mama proud. I want to touch on just a couple of things that I want to open up for your questions and hear your feedback. And we're going to have that opportunity here in a second. But I see what's happened in Washington over the last two years is making matters worse. First, with the bailout, the failed stimulus, the healthcare reform bill, and with the financial regulation bill, the Frank Dodd bill, these things are making matters worse, not better. And in a time of economic uncertainty, for the American people, we're also uncertain about what the government's going to do next. The fact is, when we look at the federal government and see that the federal government still owns two of the three American car companies, we question the role of our government and what they're doing. At least here in western North Carolina, we do this. Then, we see that the tax laws of '01 and '03, the tax cuts of '01 and '03 are going to expire at the end of the year for everyone. Top, bottom, everywhere in between, and about everything in between, in terms of energy taxes, credits, capital gains, the death tax, and on and on and on. And I see that that adds to the great deal of uncertainty coming out of Washington, which restricts and actually makes small businesses question what it will cost to employ people next year, or to make an investment, or to invest in employees now, or to even stay in business. So, we see Washington policies making matters worse. And so, I voted against the bailouts. I voted against the stimulus. I voted against the healthcare plan. I voted against the plan to raise energy taxes called cabin trade. I support extending the Bush tax cuts. But telling you all that isn't enough. That's not a complete plan. We've got issues that are really enormous in our country, and we know that. But simply saying I was against that, well, that's easy. I think there are bad laws. And I know you'll have questions about the healthcare plan and all these other issues. But I think we have to have a plan that will actually make things better. First of all, we have to have certainty when it comes to the tax code by extending those '01 and '03 taxes, right? So, we shouldn't -- if you make the same amount next year that you did this year, you shouldn't have to pay Uncle Sam more, period. Number two, we have to limit lawsuits. We spend more as a part of our economy on lawsuits than any other country on the planet. Now, we're the wealthiest country on the planet still, even with the economic downturn, but we spend more as a percentage of our total economy than any other planet still. So, you know, you measure it out, we're still spending a lot more, on average, than the rest of the world. So, we've got to limit lawsuits, because lawsuits drive up the cost of healthcare, drive up the cost of prescription drugs, medical devices, doing business, staying in business, and especially manufacturing, which manufacturing is still important to our country and our people. Third, we've got to balance the budget. Our budget is completely out of whack. It was out of whack under Republicans. It's even worse under the Democrat regime right now in Washington. Bush was bad when it came to spending. Obama is worse. So, this is a -- it was created through bipartisan spending and is now blushing. Thank you. It was created through bipartisan spending on a mass scale, and it's going to have to be fixed with a bipartisan approach. So, we're going to have to make some hard choices. They're not easy. They're not simple. It's not going to happen overnight, but we have to set the stage to balance the budget. And like I said, doing it without raising taxes. So, that's three. Number four, I talk about trade agreements all the time, but bad trade agreements have lessened our manufacturing capacity. And in Caldwell County, there's no better example than the furniture industry. So, we've got to make sure we have a trade policy that respects American jobs and American workers and lets us compete on a level playing field, not a playing field tilted to China with a 30 or 40 percent advantage that they get by not letting their currency value. Now, it's not interesting to talk about what currency does in our trade. It's not interesting to talk about trade agreements, but they're really important to American manufacturing. So, that's another component. The final component is education. I'm not asking everyone to get a PhD in English. Lord knows, I couldn't do it. Listen to me talk for a day, and you'll know no chance. But if you look at the unemployment rate, it's over 12 percent here in Caldwell County, 10 percent in North Carolina. In western North Carolina, we have high unemployment, because we lost textiles and furniture industry jobs. But if you look at nationally, that unemployment rate is 9.5 percent nationally. And if you have less than a high school degree, it's 13 percent. If you have at least some education or training after high school, that unemployment rate is 8.5. So, you're better off than the rest of the economy and the rest of the country, than the average worker, if you have some training beyond high school. And if you have a bachelor's degree or higher, that unemployment rate is 4.5 percent. So, the clear thing we have to say to our young people is you have to get education and training after high school. Otherwise, you're just going to be floating down the river, and the world's going to be acting on you, and you're not going to be acting on the world. But for those of us that are beyond that, we've got to give them opportunities to get training, to get the jobs that are here, that we got. And we've got a great resource with our community college here in Caldwell County, great higher education resources and great training. So, I'm not saying everybody has to have a PhD. I'll give you one practical application. How many of you know an out-of-work plumber? Anyone? No. Right? And when you need a plumber, you call a plumber, and the plumber comes, and the plumber charges you, and you're grateful for whatever the bill is until you read it, right? But that's training beyond high school, and you can make a middle-class living with a skill. So, we need to make sure we invest in skill, not just simply talk about education, but skills and training. And we've got great people here in western North Carolina that have the capacity, that have the capacity for innovation, for new ideas, for opportunities. But we've got to make sure we have the right environment to make that happen. And that's what all this national policy I'm talking about really will do, I think. That's my opinion. And you've given me a great honor to represent Caldwell County and nine other counties, and I certainly appreciate it. But I want to hear your questions and your comments. So, if you'll line up, we've got a microphone right over here. James is going to stand with you. And David will be over here. And if you could sort of line up against the wall there, and that way you can see and everybody else can see. All right. Well, so, if you could, if you can keep your question, one question, so I can try to answer it, and or one comment, and keep your comments a minute, that'd be great, because we want to be able to get through as many questions as people have tonight. And you'll start by saying your name and where you're from, which nation.
Attorney Flowers from Hudson. I wanted to ask about Medicare. Is there anything that can be done to stop the people in Washington from raiding it? I don't know what they're doing with the money. I understand some of us go into Medicare, and they keep calling it a --
What are they calling it?
An entitlement. Yeah, I got to say your name. Calling it an entitlement. I disagree with that. All of my working life, I paid 15 percent of my total income to Medicare. And we are now paying about $7,900 a year for the Medicare, for the supplemental insurance, and for drug insurance. So, what's an entitlement do? That's not an entitlement.
That's right. Well, what happens out of this healthcare plan is they have a lot of cuts to Medicare, billions of dollars of cuts to Medicare, in order to expand care. In order to expand care, they're cutting care.
Well, they're giving somebody to give these 250-minute, three-minute phones to a bunch of people.
But this is what I believe. So, if you're at or near retirement age, you banked on Medicare and Social Security. You made plans on it. So, those that are at or near retirement age need to be kept home, period. And when we talk about reforms for the next generation, it has to be the next generation that we make these -- if we do any changes to these entitlement programs, it impacts the next generations. That's the key thing. And we can't simply widely expand this healthcare plan on the backs of seniors, which is what the pay-for is. And that's one of the reasons why I voted against it some.
Well, I understand they go start charging the taxes in -- What, next year to pay for the thing that comes, when it comes into effect in 2014? The way that the people up there can't keep their hands off of money. Do you think a dime of that'll be left by 2014?
Just to be honest with you, I mean, you look at Social Security. If you actually took the Social Security money that we tax people for and took it out of their paycheck and just applied it to Social Security, we wouldn't be in nearly about a shape as we currently are, because we spent it on everything else.
Same thing with road tax.
Yep, exactly. North Carolina, great example, Eckerd, right? Folks up in -- up there just spending on everything else rather than actually, I don't know, building roads. So, I mean, some of this stuff is just basic principles you've got to stand up for. What I didn't mention in my intro, it's been a long day, I didn't mention healthcare. You're going to talk about uncertainty. Look at the taxes that are coming in, and the healthcare policy, it's going to be fully implemented in 2013. Why 2013? This president has to run for reelection in 2012. So great, let's delay, right? We can repeal this plan.
Do you know what's in the healthcare plan that's passed? Do they still have that thing in there where they're going to have a panel of government people that will say what my final life is, my living will, and my power of attorney is no good?
Okay. I'll just mention this, but otherwise, we want to make sure --
I'm sorry.
Because we could have a conversation all night. The next gentleman line may not like that. But there are a number of boards and commissions. Here's a great example. This is actually how the healthcare bill works. This is on my website. If you go to my website and go mckinry.house.gov, and then click on the blog section, we've got all these posters up here, and you can look at them for yourself. For those of you in the back of the room, don't worry, it's worse the closer you get. But there are a number of panels and boards, and they're going to have to make a lot of big decisions about the cost of healthcare. And that's reimbursement rate for hospitals and doctors and all this other stuff. And under this bill, they're fully empowered to make a lot of these big decisions. And one of the big concerns is how they ration care over the long term. It's not going to happen overnight, not going to be a first-day issue. But as this thing is fully implemented, what are those questions, what are those decisions they're going to make that impact people's lives and the life-saving cures that they have access to? That's my concern. It's not a day-one concern, it's what happens 20 years from now, 10 years from now. And in the meantime, trying to make sure we get jobs, this definitely increases the cost of employment for a business, or a small business, or an individual to employ another individual. So, it certainly doesn't help our economic situation. And in fact, the Congressional Budget Office, which is run by a Democrat, issued its mid-session review just today. And it says, "This certainly reduces employment." In their terms, not in a major way, but it does reduce employment. And actually, rather than employing people full-time, the larger move will be to employ people part-time, so you can avoid the healthcare mandates they put on businesses. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. What's your question? What's your name? Where are you from?
Tom Schufer, Lenora.
Hi, Tom.
In a sense, that mess on the chart over there was a result of the big shift between the big Republican majorities in the House and the Senate and the White House. All became Democratic, 75-vote majority of Democrats in the House, something like that. Is that right? 75 votes?
They've got a 39-seat majority.
Is it just 39 seats?
39 seats, which is --
Okay. Anyway, they've got big majorities.
Big.
And I asked one of your aides, who was at one GOP event not long ago, and he's -- I asked him, "What was the single biggest factor in creating that big shift from GOP majorities to -- and the White House to all Democratic?" And he said, "The Iraq War." Now, how do you see that working out in the future and the decision-making processes that were involved? Are we going to have a residual force there forever, like we have in Korea and Germany? What's going to happen with those wars?
Thank you for your question, Tom. Well, the Democrats have a 39-seat majority in the House. They had, before Scott Brown was elected, before Ted Kennedy's passing, he had 60 Republicans in -- I'm sorry, 60 Democrats in the Senate. Now, it's 59. So, we went from Republican majorities in the House, the Senate, and the White House to the largest majorities for any party in two generations in Democrat hands in the House, the Senate, and a Democrat president. It wasn't one issue that changed control of Congress. I think one issue in particular that built on everything else was spending. Any of you all agree with me?
Yeah.
That we had Republicans that were spent like Democrats.
Well, you remember how Obama was famous for being against the Iraq War?
Okay.
That was his calling card.
So, I'm just telling you what I think was a central, one of the more central issues. Now, that, and you add in the response to Katrina, which showed the federal government's incompetent, and Republicans hadn't reformed government or made it, you know, didn't make it -- they didn't make it small, and they didn't make it competent, right? And you can see by the way that this president has that same competence problem and actually solving a crisis when you look at the BP bill, right? And, I mean, so, it's a major problem when the government's not only big, but incompetent. I mean, that's, you know, it's not healthy and good. Question about Iraq. I was elected in 2004, and the decision I had to make was, are we going to fund the troops? They're in harm's way. I'm not the commander-in-chief, nor am I a general in the field. I know that, and it's very important in this whole process that you know your role. And the mistake we made in previous wars is you had members of Congress think that they were the commander-in-chief, and undermined what we're trying to do. I believe that what this president said and what General Petraeus has said, we'll have a baseline of security in Iraq, and we're going to leave it to the Iraqis. We shouldn't be fighting their neighborhood battles when they need to be having, using their own police force and their own men and women, well, men, it's Iraq, based on their regard for women. I mean, this is a, in the whole Middle East for that matter. So, they need to be front and center in this battle. So, we've got 50,000 troops in Iraq today. We have folks positioned around, if something happens, for strike forces. All this is public information. And I think, over the long term, we need to have as small a presence as possible in Iraq and leave it up to the Iraqis to fight this thing. It's a matter of their protecting their own sovereignty and making sure they have security internally, it's not our fight. And I think we've got to make sure we see it through, where they actually are a functioning democracy, and they're an independent sovereign country. But we've now transitioned the fight to them, and that's important. And I think that's where we need to be, and that's the goal. And we can thank General Petraeus, and we can thank President Bush for putting the policies in place to actually make this time possible where --
You think we're going to be there for many -- I'm asking, sharing into this.
For a number of years, yes.
Afghanistan, if you have a --
Oh, Lord, that is like eight questions. I mean, just to be honest with you, Afghanistan is a much tougher situation. Basically, the Iraq, if we had to think of things about how a society is organized, we had to take Iraq from the 1960s society to the 1990s. We have to take Afghanistan from the year 1000 and bring them up to at least 1800s. 19, I mean, so, we've got a, it's a much more difficult situation there. I do have enormous respect for General Petraeus, and that's who I'm listening to, because he's the man on the ground, he knows what's happening on the ground, and that's key, that we listen to our folks in the field. So, that's what I'm listening for. They're both tough situations, and they're not easy to bring folks home, but we've got to make sure that when we put men and women in harm's way, they got the best training, they got the best technology, and when they come home, the best care. That's my obligation. Thank you. Yes, sir?
My name is Ken Owens. I'm from Lenora. Hope you enjoyed your tour yesterday. Sorry I missed you, I was on night shift.
All right. So, you're a wire?
Yes.
Absolutely.
North Carolina is the seventh-largest producer of wine in the United States, and you currently co-sponsored a bill that would once again restrict interstate shipments of wine. And by doing that, it would only make sense that your limited choices driving prices back up. And as fast as the wine industry in North Carolina is growing, that's going to limit a lot of family-owned businesses from being able to ship wine outside of North Carolina. And I was just wondering why you support that, what your logic behind that is.
This is the first time I've gotten this question before, but in North Carolina, we have the three-tier system, separation between the producers, distributors, and the consumers in order to make sure we maintain, this is basically since prohibition, this is the system we've put in place. And I want to maintain that and make sure that's done according to North Carolina laws. In terms of shipping out, I didn't realize it would have that much impact on your capacity to ship out.
Yeah, not only in North Carolina, but in other states, there's a lot of sacred reasons. If your wine club members from places in California that's not distributed, then that bill is going to restrict those wineries from shipping as well and receiving wine once again, about like it was 10, 15 years ago before it changed, where it got deregulated to where all states could ship interstate wine once again.
Okay. I'll see if I can get, look into that and give you an answer. I'm not well-versed in the wine business. But, all right, do you have a winery?
No, I was just, I'm a wine club member, then several wineries out of California. I also support a line of the local North Carolina wineries as well. And I know that that bill is going to restrict, because if they can't ship out of state, then that's going to cut down their revenue and possibly for some of their businesses.
I'll follow up with you afterwards. I'll get your answer. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it, sir. Yes, sir?
Hey, you remember me?
Yeah.
Don Levens of Hudson. If you all want to regain the House and the Senate in November, I suggest that you do another contract with America like they did in '94. As far as the economy's concerned, I'll tell you what you do. When it all comes about, friend, tell you what you do. You zero out capital gains. You take your corporate tax rate down to 12.5 percent, because we pay the highest corporate tax in the world at 35 percent. Litigation reform. I can go on, because I've got people here who want to ask questions. Y'all, go back to the contract with America. Look at it. Learn from it. It worked then, it can work again. And above all, y'all get a spine, please. Stand up for America. This is America. As this moth's dying on the touchstone, let me tell you this. I'm a proud American here. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the United States of America. We are still, regardless of what a commander-in-chief status, we are still one nation under God.
I'll tell you something. Town hall meetings make my spine a little stronger.
It brings down my blood pressure.
No, you're right. We need an agenda. And what we're doing this August, and what other Republicans around the country in the US House are doing this August, is listening to the American people, saying, "Tell me what our agenda should be. I want to hear from you." We've had too much of Washington telling you what to do and telling you what they're going to do for you or really to you, right? So, this is the frustration. So, this input's important. This website, Americaspeakingout, right? Go to it. Look at it. You can look, you can vote on what you want, you can say you like this, you don't like this, you know? And we're going to take that input online, plus the input we have from town halls, and you're going to see in September a Republican agenda for House Republicans. It'll be a conservative agenda, it'll focus on spending and making sure, well, economic security and jobs. And it's going to be based on the feedback of the American people. And you're absolutely right. We need to actually have a solid agenda. And what I said at the beginning, this agenda needs to incorporate two things, what we will do and what we will not do. And what I've learned, especially over the last two years, is everybody will tell you all the good stuff, all the easy stuff. Tell me what you're not going to do. Give me your baseline principles. I am not going to do this. And it's that, it's important to have both of those pieces, and we need to have that in the agenda. And I think that's what will be a -- And I think that's what will be a part of the agenda. So, I appreciate you speaking out, and that's very important.
Yes, do it.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Melissa Hedner, from Colorado, North Carolina, and this is my second town hall meeting, and my first was Monday night.
Thank you. Thanks for coming up.
I have a question for you. Is there anything in the stimulus money that has or can be a bit of furniture manufacturers and not the importers in this area?
Good question. Well, the stimulus is $862 billion. Over $560 billion has already been spent, and there is nothing for manufacturing. And this is not a real stimulus in terms of helping private sector job growth. We have a handful of infrastructure projects, they've got big signs next to them. Actually, the biggest stimulus, out of the stimulus, was for sign manufacturers. And no offense to them at all, but that's not a real stimulus for the economy. The real issue we're going to have for manufacturing is our tax policy and our trade policy. And the fact is, when you can actually buy completed goods, I got a nod from one individual who is all about trade policy, but when you have a trade policy that says, "We have an open door to you, China. We've given you most favored nation status. We will allow you to devalue your money by 40%, thereby making your goods cheaper for export," while the rest of the globe lets their currency have a fair exchange, right off the top, before you even talk about them being a communist country and state ownership of property, you have a 40% advantage. It's very difficult to compete with that. We have a few that are doing it, but it's very difficult. The real issue beyond those is a marketplace issue. If you don't have a job, you can't buy furniture. If you don't have savings and money, you can't buy furniture. So, we've got to make sure the economy starts moving again, and we're going to have some manufacturing that's going to be able to stay here. But long term, we've got to address those bigger federal policy issues like trade and tax policies. Thank you. Yes, sir. What's your name? Where are you from?
Terry Miller, I'm from Hudson. And don't let this scare you, you just probably couldn't remember all the dates and times.
That's all right.
But I would like to speak with you concerning oil. As you know, we just recently got, hopefully, over one of the biggest environmental disasters that we've ever known, and that was the oil that was forced down into Gulf of Mexico. Well, the National Geographic Society, our services, issued a report April of, in April 2008, and they gave a report that only the businessmen and the government knew about. Basically, what it is, is there's an area under North Dakota, South Dakota, Montana, and all the way up into Canada that has enough oil that it would supply the United States until year 2041, according to their report. President Bush, in 2008, or maybe it's '09, told the oil people that he wanted them to start extracting this oil because it is only 1,000 feet below the ground, and it can be extracted at $16 a barrel. Now, what they would charge us or the refinery people, I don't know, but according to their report, not a single drop of oil has been pumped out of, it's called the Bakken, B-A-K-K-E-N, formation, which is a part of the Williston Basin in that area. They estimate that that oil is eight times the amount of oil that Saudi Arabia has. It's 18 times as much oil as Iraq has. It is 21 times as much oil as Croatia has. It's 23, 22 times as much oil as Iran has, 500 times the oil of Yemen. And it's all right here in the western North Carolina, I mean, United States, but it's not being touched. Are we saving it until the rest of the world runs out? We got oil. Why aren't we doing something with this instead of going to the Gulf, polluting the water in the oceans, spending an enormous amount of money for oil we're importing from those places that really don't like us too good? And we're not using our own oil.
Amen.
Well, I don't know your stats on how large this oil find is, but it's a-
Let me interrupt you just for a minute.
Go right ahead.
I forwarded it to you on the 14th. I didn't get an answer, but-
I've been doing town halls the last two weeks, and so we get a lot of volume of email, and I'm sorry, I have not seen, to be very honest with you.
You want this one?
Sure. Thank you for the question, yeah. I mean, we absolutely need to use our resources, and the fact is that if you look in, if you look at the unemployment numbers nationally, North Dakota has the lowest unemployment rate in the nation because of this oil find. And they're actively trying to extract this oil. They're actively doing it, they have all the incentive to do it because it's there, and it is an enormous find. In terms of the stats, I don't know the stats, but yes, I mean, that is there. The question is, what is our federal policy in terms of extracting our resources on American soil? And unfortunately, the agenda in Washington is to tax domestic production of carbon-based energy sources. That's their agenda. Well, what happens to the foreign-based stuff? Well, they don't tax it, so the incentive is to import it. And so, look, this is moving forward, this is actually happening in terms of drilling there, and I'll find out all the details and make sure we cross every team, dot every eye.
Start drilling.
Amen.
Start drilling.
Amen. But, look, my energy plan, what I support, is using our natural resources that we have. And we've got vast quantities of oil in remote areas of Alaska. We've got oil here. We have natural gas, a bountiful supply of natural gas. We have coal. We have enough coal that makes Saudi Arabia's oil look like a simple puddle, right? We need to use those resources. But we need to use those resources and take that revenue that comes from it, because these are our federal lands, our taxpayer-owned lands. Take that resource and invest in alternative energy, the next generation of technology that not only is cleaner, but is cheaper, not only is cheaper, but we don't have to get it from overseas.
And we don't have to pollute.
Right, exactly.
The oceans and the water.
That's right.
If World War II Germany was producing synthetic culture.
That's right. Yes, sir. What's your question? Where are you from?
Hi, my name's Dick Schoenwolf, I'm from Granite Falls. And in the way of government reform, I got two questions. You're on the Government Reform Committee, right?
Sure.
Okay.
Yes.
This administration's supposed to be all about government reform, and I just want to know why the unemployment rate is reported at the people who are actively on the unemployment rolls instead of the people who really are unemployed? Because if they counted everybody who's out of work, instead of 9.5, it'd probably really be, what, about 16 or 17% across the country? I don't know how high the real unemployment rate is, but... And the other thing in terms of government reform is, why do you guys keep on passing bills that are incomplete? Like the healthcare bill, they passed it with details to be filled in later. Financial reform, they passed it with details to be filled in later. As somebody who helps to work, I do bookkeeping for a business around town here, and it's so hard to make plans when you sit here working on healthcare and then the government comes in and changes part of it because they haven't finished writing the bill yet. Or, you know, you work on this financial reform stuff and then they finish writing the bill after the bill gets passed. Is there not a way that you guys can pass a bill that's complete and not have to change it after you pass it?
Well, what you're saying is you expect a 2,400-page bill to be complete?
Yeah.
Hold on, I'm with you. Make no mistake, I'm with you.
I'm going to sit there and go like, "Oh, you're completed."
So, we have a 2,400-page bill and a 2,000-page bill, the Frank Dodd Regulation Bill and the Healthcare Bill, right? They give enormous powers to establish boards or establish new boards that write the regulations of how the bill is carried out. This is the problem. This is why healthcare, this healthcare bill adds uncertainty, why the financial regulation bill adds uncertainty, because you have banks that have had existing practices they've used for 10 or 20 years, or in some cases, 70 years. Boring banking, right? And they're changing the rules completely. And the banks don't know, and as individuals, customers of banks, we don't know how they're changing it. And so, this just adds greater uncertainty and restricts lending or restricts investment when it comes to people, and especially healthcare.
Why can't it be all written out when it gets passed?
Wait a second. They didn't ask my opinion when they passed these two subjects. My point is, my point is, when you pass a 2,000-page bill, it's bad enough, but when you give enormous powers to unelected bodies, it makes it even worse. So, we need to make sure that when we talk about government, we're paring it down, not expanding it. This certainly expands. That's my perspective. When it comes to unemployment rate, there are two different numbers the federal government has. That is, they do basically a poll and say, "Are you looking for work? Are you working? Okay, if you're not working, are you looking for work?" And if you say, "I'm not looking for work," then you're not unemployed, right? So, then you have a second number, which is those drawing unemployment, which, as we know, that is not complete either. Then, buried in other data that we can point you to, you can see those who are underemployed or have just said, "The heck with it, I'm not looking." That's the bigger number. That's the scarier number because it ain't 9.5, it's in the high teens. And that is the devastating and frightening thing for people who have given up looking, which is, you know, we're an optimistic people, and people give up, that is often in our country. So, but I'll be happy to point you to those statistics. Yes, sir? What's your name? Where are you from?
Good evening, sir. I'm Wayne McCollum, I'm from here in Lenore.
Good seeing you again.
Good seeing you again. In 1973, when I joined the United States Navy, I took an oath to hold and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic. For 31 years while I was on active duty, I continued to do that. When I retired in 2004, I moved here to North Carolina, to Calvo County, and I became an educator at one of our high schools here. The program I teach, I'm able to teach my students about citizenship, about the Constitution of the United States, about our government. And one of the things that's very frustrating here recently, and it's been going on for a while, is watching how we have judges that are legislating from the bench instead of following what our forefathers set up within that constitution. Just recently, there's been two instances concerning the Medal of Honor that judges have overthrown a law that was ratified that you were part of getting through that made it a felony to wear awards that they were not supposed to have. And basically, what is that telling our nation, our kids, those people that I'm teaching, trying to show that we should have a respect for our government, showing that basically you can go out and because of their words, you can lie, and it's okay because of our First Amendment, which I don't understand how they came to that? But what can we do to stop those kind of travesties? And what can you do? And I understand completely the three different power bases and such, but what can be done to stop these kinds of travesties to where we actually go back and utilize the Constitution the way it was written, instead of people just taking it for granted and doing what they want to because they're in office?
What do y'all think?
Three.
Wayne, number one, elections have consequences. The people we elect in office create the policies that we have to live by. The question is, how do we limit the courts? Because we've seen so many judges go so far beyond constitutional bounds, the constitutional bounds, that I think we all accept. Legislating from the bench has been a problem for generations. I mean, you know, so I think what the Congress has to do is use the powers that the Constitution gives us to limit the jurisdiction of courts. And that is a legislative power, and the power of the purse resides with the Congress. We have to use that power to limit these actions and these crazy overreaches of a judge determining what is or what isn't marriage. Last time I checked, that was established long before the founding fathers walked the earth. The important thing to tell the next generation is that we are only as good as the people that show up on Election Day. Our elected officials mirror our country. We're a representative democracy. Serving the US House is humbling. We've got tall people, we've got short people, we've got incredibly smart people, and we've got some others. It's a representative democracy. We have Indian chiefs, we have fire chiefs, we've got everyone in between. And so, we've got to make sure that we show up on Election Day and make our voice heard because we have this opportunity and our form of republic, we elect the people that serve us for two years, or six years in the Senate, four years in the House, I'm sorry, in the White House. So, the question is, just to think about in context, we're stuck with people for two years. We're stuck with the government for two years. The founding fathers, when they wrote the Constitution, decided to have the most frequent elections on earth. In the House of Representatives, you have to be directly elected by the people. There's been no individual ever appointed to the US House. They have to be elected by the people. Now, in the Senate, they've had appointments and everything else, right? White House, we know, governorship, everything else. This is one of the singular offices in our land that has always been elected by the people. So, we need to listen to the people. And 200 years ago, it's the most frequent elections on earth. Fast forward to today, we still have the most frequent elections on the planet. And sometimes, the American people say, "Keep doing what you're doing. We like what you're doing." Other times, the American people want to flush the toilet. And if you don't hold on real tight to that rim, you're going down the tubes. And I just hear that, using too many plumber analogies, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. But I hear that coming. I hear that coming in a-
I hope so. And please continue to do what you can to get us back on track, to follow the Constitution instead of making it such a travesty compared to what it was set up to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Christine Gates. Good evening. I've read these two books, the North Carolina State Constitution and the, we have the same one, the US Constitution. Nowhere in either one of these two books does it mandate me to buy anything. So I'm not sure where the healthcare mandate comes from, because it's not in here. The government's not giving that right. So my question is, what advice do you have to protect me and my liberty if I am not going to purchase medical insurance and will refuse to pay the penalty?
This is a wonderful, these last two questions, okay. Wayne, your question? Okay, now, Christine, both constitutional questions, right? This is wonderful, that we're having an open forum and saying, "What are the constitutional bounds of our government?" When was the last meeting? When was the last year that we've had meetings that asked that question? Calvin Coolish vetoed a bill in the 1920s because he said it wasn't constitutional. When's the last time we heard that from a press? Well, probably in the 1920s, right? The debate, right, healthcare. First of all, it phases in, this healthcare bill, and I'm gonna answer your question. It phases in over a number of years. Some taxes started this year, the tanning tax, right? And other taxes, they get phased in gradually and everything else. And so they've tried to front-load apple pie and dessert first, and then you get the bitter greens as the thing goes on and on and on, to sort of lure people in and say it's okay. We have the ability to legislatively repeal this bill. It is going to take the American people electing a supermajority of the House and the Senate that are in favor of repeal. I've gotta be very direct about this. The likelihood of that happening in this election is not very high, in my opinion. However, the election's not happened yet, and things can change. Number two, the next election, we still have another opportunity, because it wouldn't take a supermajority if we had a president who would sign a repeal law, which we won't have, or we won't have that opportunity till 2012. Okay, so outright repealing, which I'm in favor of, I'm a cosponsor of outright repealing. Secondly, we can delay implementation or defund sections of the bill. I'm for that. Third, we have lawsuits that are going through the courts right now. Virginia suing and other states have joined in this lawsuit. The debate and the court system, before this bill was passed, it was not, that personal mandate wasn't a tax, right? The presidents didn't say to the people in the Congress, "Vote for this, it is a tax on people," until it was passed. Then his attorney is in the courts saying, "Actually, this is permissible, because the federal government has the power to tax the people." The states are saying, "Actually, this comes from the Interstate Commerce Clause, not taxation," based on all the legislative record of this bill. Which, there's no individual in Congress who said, "Yeah, this is a great bill, it's a tax on everyone, and if we're taxing them, if they don't buy it," you know. So it's gonna be this huge debate, and I think it's gonna go to the Supreme Court. I'm not a lawyer, but based on all the feedback I've gotten from sound legal minds, is that it will work its way up to the US Supreme Court. And we can thank, well, we can be hopeful that the court will view very skeptically this massive expansion of the Interstate Commerce Clause. And I read the Constitution like you do, which is, how can I mandate you to purchase a product? Let's say you grew up in Caldwell County, you never lived Caldwell County, you go to the Caldwell County Hospital, you're a doctor, was born and raised in Caldwell County, on and on and on, you've never touched any other state. Tell me how you going to get a checkup because you have a runny nose, is Interstate Commerce? Justify it.
So can I say more?
Sure.
So by 2014, when I should be in jail, because they'll come and get me, because I'm not paying the penalty?
I'll bail you out personally.
I appreciate that, but do you think it'll be through the court systems by then? Will it still be being drawn through the Supreme Court?
Oh, I think it'll be, yes. From what I understand, it will be.
You'll still be in the court?
No, no, it will be through the courts.
So I'm just going to jail or not?
You hear him in the back, he said, "You'll be alone."
My name is Grace Mitchell, and I'm from Nor. In your opening statement, you mentioned education. And I'm glad to see that we have several of our board members here. I would like to clarify that I am not a board member, I have never been a board member, I'm not running for the board, and I have a plan to run for the board, okay?
Well, if you're on the school board, y'all wanna stand up and say it? Well, maybe you should, you're starting that way.
But I am interested in education. And I was born and raised in Caldwell County and had the privilege of being educated in Caldwell County. And I feel that I have one of the best educations that any person could ever get anywhere. I'm not the smartest person in the whole wide world, but I do okay. What I want to know is, why is the government got their nose in education? First of all, the teachers are the ones who know what is going on in the school. Not every school is the same. I lived in Maryland, the schools in Maryland were very different from the schools that are here in North Carolina. And the things that they taught were different. Right now, I have a son who is a math teacher that cannot find a job. And he's been out of work for two years, and he's applied for every job that has come on the email or the internet that's here in the area. What is wrong that we have to get rid of teachers and all of those educators in the school? How are we supposed to be able to educate the children and provide a future for this nation, when we cannot give them appropriate education by having the best teachers possible? Where is the money that has been allocated for our students? And why are all of the students that are winning the, like the spelling bees, the geography quizzes, all of the other things are either foreign or they're homeschooled? What is wrong with our educational system, and what can we do to repair it?
Educational choice, educational freedom, that's the answer. You want reform? Have competition. Justify our tax dollars. It's not easy to say, I'll tick off a bunch of educators on that, not all of them. So educational choice, charter schools, private and religious schools, homeschooling, all of that adds competition to the marketplace, and that's what I support. And I believe that our tax dollars should flow with the children, not simply mandate that children have to go to, you know, the public school in order to get the tax dollars to fall public. Secondly, we have too much money being spent on education in Washington that stays in Washington. All right? So US Department of Education employs roughly 4,200 people in Washington DC. I've had no teacher say, "Thank you for employing those 4,200 people." Never heard that. Has anyone? The average salary for the US Department of Education in Washington DC is $96,000 a year. That is more than twice the national average for a teacher. Our priorities are out of whack when you have somebody sitting behind a desk in Washington who's not educating a single child, making more than twice as much as a teacher who actually is. And so I think the money has to come down to the state level and down to the local level, and we can get a far better return on our investment if we get that federal money into the classroom, not behind a desk in Washington. How many school board members do we have here? Oh, they're all lined up together. Are you looking for protection? Or are you just trying to protect Mike? Yes, sir? What's your name, where you're from?
Yes, Ron King, I'm from Granite Falls.
Hi, Ron. Good to see you.
Good evening, Patrick. Yes, I wanted to first thank you for co-sponsoring the repealing of the healthcare bill.
Thank you.
It was good to hear. And also, a while back, you stood out to, took a stand against the czars of the Obama administration early on, holding them accountable. And I just wanna say, you know, a lot of Americans are noticeably upset with our government and that, you know, and what has come about are the Tea Parties. And we have formed a Caldwell Tea Party, and so, to try to organize Americans, for, you know, our government to get things right for the American people. And what that amounts to is saying that both parties, we feel, have, you know, ended up with bad results over these years. And so, you know, we would like to see you commit to the Tea Party Caucus, Michelle Bachmann started that, and how you feel about joining with them, but, you know, to stand up with the, against the establishment Republicans like Lindsey Graham, John McCain, goes along those lines, a lot of people might not think that, but he does. And so, but some of your stances have been, you know, not going along with the party, which is good, but the, a big part of, I think we're at a dangerous point in our country where this thing coming at us, this redistribution of wealth, and the socialism that's gonna take over, and it needs the American people in the US country to get away from that establishment.
So, Tea Party Caucus, all right. Who started the Tea Party? Anybody in Washington? Now, raise your hand if you're involved in the Tea Party, right? Where did you start it? Everybody who raised their hand started the Tea Party, right? I don't want Washington trying to take over a grassroots movement, and there is no reason why the Tea Party should have a return address of Washington DC. And hey, look at my votes, look at our conversations, look at the fact that I have gone to rallies, look at my votes. No, more than what I've said, you know, people can deliver wonderful speeches or recreate teleprosters. So this is simply, this is simply, in my opinion, trying to say, "We're putting a stamp." Look, I'm leading your parade. That's all right. I'm listening to you. And the fact is, that independence gives you the ability to raise the right ruckus. And I don't want Washington to get their hands on this thing. So, you know, everybody said, "Well, I'm the leader of the Tea Party." You know, I was talking to a candidate running for office, and he says, "Well, you know, the Tea Party supports me." I go, "Which one?" "I'm the leader of mine in my house." Right? Next-door neighbors, "Fine." Right? "Oh, no, they like me." "Well, it's fine, but get met with all of them." Right? This is a movement, as I understand it, saying return to constitutional principles and eliminate government, and leave me the heck alone.
I was at the 9/12 march in Washington last September, it was incredible. And we're going up there this August, this next week.
Next Saturday, right?
Sarah Palin will be there.
Thanks, Ron, appreciate it. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. And we're looking at our final folks, anybody else who wants to get in line? I think those will be the last questions here. We've got three on this side, two over here. Ron's already handing out cards. Anybody else who can get in line now, so that we can sort of see, and then end it there, so that we don't keep everybody all night? Yes, ma'am?
Yes, I am Merna from Granite Falls. I would like to ask you, Congressman, about, is there anything we could do to re-upfill the Medicare of Obama? And do you think we could, what are they gonna do with unspent stimulus payments? Because I am an ordinary worker, it needs to be given to the taxpayer. And what are they doing in Washington DC? Nothing. And I keep thinking that, I don't know how Obama is in Washington DC when he is an illegal president and demanding all this American people willing to get rid of that.
I'm not gonna cross you. Unspent stimulus money, we got just shot 300 billion of the 862 billion that isn't spent, 290-something billion, they just round it in billions right now in Washington. It hasn't been spent. I think we need to say no, we need to make sure that money, we're borrowing that money. It's not sitting there, it's our tax, so I say no. And that'll help us bring us closer to balance. This is the debt held by the public. Like I said, Bush was bad on spending, Obama is worse. He doubles the debt in five years, triples it in 10 years. Additionally, you look at the deficit, these are the Bush years, I was fighting my Republican president, the president of my party, when he had a deficit of $400 billion. We were able to get it down to $180 billion, fighting tooth and nail. And let's, I'll just be very honest with you, I supported Bush on a number of things, but he didn't care about balancing the budget. I mean, he just did. And love him in many ways, but this one wasn't his thing. So we got it down to $180 billion, and I thought that was awful. So Bush was bad, Obama is worse, okay? So a $1.4 trillion deficit, $1.47 trillion deficit this year, $1.4 trillion next year. Trillion, right? We're borrowing this money mainly from foreign countries like China, China being the biggest. And everybody talks about this. But this is trillions of dollars that we're borrowing. So it's going well beyond China, and that erodes our ability to negotiate with them when it comes to jobs. And right now, interest rates are low, but if we keep spending like this, interest rates are gonna go up. And that's gonna hurt employment. And when the federal government's borrowing this much money, that limits our capital and the private sector. So clearly, we gotta get right with spending. You're absolutely right. So, thank you for, appreciate it. Yes, sir?
My name is Richard.
Hi, Richard.
This is my first time meeting.
Great, welcome aboard. If this was a radio show, I'd have some sound for you.
But we came here to find out what's going on, let's see what's really going on. You'd hear the news, but I wanna be right there with you guys. I've got a big education tonight, really, yeah. What we need, like the fellow over there says, we need you guys to get up and start forward and also make a platform for Obama. I haven't heard anything as far as a platform for Obama. And the question, main question I had is, are you in favor of abolishing the 14th Amendment, which is the birthright amendment?
No, and I'll tell you why. So, this is about anchor babies. You've heard about this, right?
Yes.
All right. How many are concerned about it? Okay, now, how many are concerned about illegal immigration? Right. Right. So, as a conservative, I... So, as a conservative, I only rarely would ever support amending the Constitution. So, that's number one. Number two, the 14th Amendment does many other things. Right? And I don't think that's, so, number one, I'm not quick to change the Constitution. Number two, the process is long to do that and it's so rarely done. Number three, we can achieve, this question, we can fix this problem if we simply had border security. Right? So, I'm sorry about the 14th Amendment. It's a wrong discussion. Talk about a physical wall in urban areas on our southern border. Didn't build it. Bush was slow to build it, but eventually we started building parts of it. What happened in San Diego, right there, ground went down. Illegal crossings went down. What, that's what happens with a physical perimeter. Real border security works. Number two, because it's all linked together, right? I mean, number two, you have to have border security through people, too. It's not simply a wall. Wall doesn't work everywhere. So, that means people. Number three, internal enforcement. Right now, we have e-Verify that is an option. And that is a way to verify that someone's name and social security number actually match. Right now, you may, an employer may get a notice two months later that Sue Smith is actually Steve Smith and there are 20 people that are using that social security number. Right? That's not right. We need to make sure that we have, if Visa, you can swipe that Visa card and spend a dollar, why can't you do the same thing? FedEx can deliver something around the world overnight. Yet, our federal government can't tell you that a social security number and name match. It's absolutely absurd. So, federal incompetence and we need to make sure that those, those things happen. The final thing, which is so revolutionary, we don't need any more immigration laws. We need enforcement of our existing rules. Thank you for coming tonight, too. I appreciate it. Now, we got the final four over here. Final four, final three over here, and we'll get to the questions. Yes, sir. What's your name and where are you from?
My name is Stephen Schomel. I'm the father of that, I'm the son of that fellow over there.
Oh, very good.
So, I think I was the youngest person, but I think the young lady over there might have me beat a little bit.
Thanks for coming, though.
Oh, you're welcome. Well, he had to drive. I wanted to come anyway. But more comment than a question, I think it is very important for the people in Washington, both the senators and the representatives, to think and plan in the long run, whether it be ju, not limited to just a budget or anything else, but looking at such things and keeping the laws clear, trying to get some handle on lawsuits and lawyers who wiggle their way around established laws to get something through that we never intended for them to do. I understand that people want to reduce government regulation, but I don't see any other way to limit big companies such as the Wall Street trading companies or BP, who have millions and billions of dollars and lawyers to get around the laws that are in place so that they can do things that they shouldn't be doing. I don't see any way to restrict them other than having regulation. Because I don't see a way to get around their breed other than that. I would just like to see more people working on what they believe, sticking to, doing what they say and not caring much about party lines. Because I have heard for the past two years, a lot of Democrats not caring what other people thought because they said, oh, we've got this majority. We don't have to listen. I don't, I want to say words my mother wouldn't be proud of. I don't give any of that for people who are only concerned about Republican or Democrat. I would rather see people sticking to what they believe and voting their conscience and what they think their people want, regardless of what any party, we've become too sectarian, too much Republican, too much Democrat. If we had everyone in Congress working to do what their people wanted, you would have, and people cared less about the name of it, we'd get more done and...
Thank you. It makes complete sense. I'll tell you about the budget. This makes sense in the context of the budget. First town hall meeting, someone stand up and say, oh, second town hall meeting. Fellow stood up and said, why don't you do this? There are Republican programs Republicans just love and there are Democrat programs that Democrats just love. Why don't you say this? Democrats, you come up with ways to cut those programs and to get, you know, more results with less money and do the same with Democrats? I said, great idea. Department of Defense. I support national defense in a big way. I, you know, I just do. But there is waste in the Department of Defense. And as a conservative, I have an obligation to step up and say, yeah, it's not easy, but we got to root out the waste there. No big contracts aren't acceptable. You have to have real competition in order to get the best dollar for the taxpayers. We need to have these things. And it should apply for the Department of Defense and the rest of the government, too. So, we need to make sure that we're getting the most out of our dollar. And our budget solution's going to have to come with, from both parties. It's not simply going to be a Republican idea or Democrat. It's going to have to be a good idea. And that's where we're going to have to move forward. Thank you. Thanks for coming. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Shirley Canoe from Lenore. And I moved here last year from Arizona. Hey, Arizona. I'd like to go back, get a little more specific from you about the immigration stuff. Number one, how do you feel about the lawsuit the government has filed against the state of Arizona?
I'm against it.
Okay. And most importantly, what do you and your colleagues propose we do with the 12 to 20 million illegals currently in this country? Because we can build all the walls in the world, we still have that, you know, the elephant in the room. What do we do with that?
When the boat keeps filling up with water, we can't talk about, you know, what, we can't talk about anything except actually stopping the leak. Once we stop the leak, then we can get the water out of the boat, right? So, that discussion, we are far from it. What do you do with the illegals that are currently here? The economy is taking care of a lot of illegals that were here for jobs. I think if you have internal enforcement and verification of employment like other countries do, it naturally takes care of those that are here illegally in our society. Because the large draw are benefits and jobs and not necessarily in that order. And so, I think we've got to focus on that border security question and that internal enforcement question before we can even contemplate that. And with this administration, we're pretty far from even the border security component. Thank you.
Hello, welcome to Lenore.
Good to see you, Bill.
And it's a strong support.
Thank you.
And great to stand on the issues like immigration and social issues, too.
Thank you.
So, the question I have is someone, a friend that couldn't make it tonight, I would ask the question for them.
Oh, that's always excuse.
Oh, no, this talk about raising the age for drawing social security consent. Instead, it's heard some rumors about that and just what is going on and give something I can and we can tell them. It's not major, but I'm 77.
Well, you don't look it. Social Security, my retirement age, when I'm able to get social security, 67 currently, and there's a discussion raising the retirement age, I don't think that's the right discussion. And anyone that's close to retirement age or retired, we got to keep them hold. For those that are younger, like mid-40s and younger, our structure is going to have to be different. For my generation, when we're able to retire, if social security's going to be there, it's going to look different. It just is. But if you give somebody 30 years, 20 or 30 years to plan, they can make those decisions. But the federal government should pull the rug out from other people that are about to retire, especially with the economy is tanked and hurts some, a lot of folks that are about to retire are trying to, trying to work a little more until they can get there. So, I don't think...
Before 65, that's what it's like.
Yep, that's right. And I do, yeah, I wouldn't like that discussion either, to be honest with you. I don't, I don't think, I don't think we'll see policy like that changing anything for, changing benefits for anyone that's out of near retirement age for social security. Thanks, Bill. Appreciate it. One more over here and then, next, you're next.
I'm Chrissy and I'm from Granite Falls.
Hi, Chrissy. Thanks, Bill.
And my question is, many people in Washington are saying that the Constitution is outdated because it was wrote 70 years ago. And I just want to give this out here. This wasn't wrote to limit us, it was wrote to limit the government. And that's why I think if they want, they want to say it's outdated and they can't go by it, so they won't have any more limits on what they can, and what they can say and what they can do. What are you going to do to protect the Constitution?
How I vote. How I vote.
I mean, like, what are you going to do to influence, other than just voting, how are you going to tell the other congressmen and congresswomen how they should vote, how they need to protect this?
Very loudly. No, I mean, when I talk to students, when I talk to groups, I, you know, it's something I talk to students about all the time. Who gives you your rights? Now, I'm here, I'm here, I'm your congressman, you know, from, all right? All right? And you go to a lot of schools and they go, well, Constitution? No. Sheriff? No offense to Alan Jones, that's, you know, but no, it's God. And I see, I see all y'all pointing out, but yeah, God. God gives you your rights and that Constitution is there to protect us from the government. And it's supposed to limit the government. You're absolutely right. It is a, it's a management document for what the federal government can and cannot do and in pretty, pretty explicit terms. And at the time of the founding, most countries, well, we were the first written constitution for a republic. I mean, we, our founding fathers said, we believe that the government shouldn't intervene in your life, the federal government shouldn't intervene in your life in the ways that I think it's doing right now. The states, however, who created the federal government and the people, the states, well, if you want socialized healthcare, go to Massachusetts. Right? State constitutions can change more frequently. State laws can react to people more directly and everything else and that's how it's supposed to be intended. Thank you for bringing it up. Thanks. Appreciate it, Chrissy. We've got one question from online that came in via Facebook. If you're not on Facebook, it's pretty interesting. You know, look, look at my, my site. I've got a personal one and an office one. Please take a look. This is from Dennis Phillips. Why do we allow our jobs to move to communist countries? How does this help us? China, biggest communist country on the globe. So, if you're a small business in the United States, you're not competing against a small business in China. You're competing against the whole force of the Chinese government. I don't think we should do trade with communist countries. What was our stance for the Soviet Union? Not like, oh, that's good, we get cheap t-shirts. It's a wrong approach. I think we have to realize that, you know, in free markets, you actually have to adhere to free market principles and compete on, in that basis. That's what I believe. Yes, sir?
Through the years, I have read in the Wall Street Journal, Investors Business Daily, the Charlotte Disturber, and the New York Stock Exchange. And I gather that three major bills based by the Congress have been the healthcare bill, the banking bill by Mr. Chairman Dodd, and the finance bill and your, as I understand it, you're in the finance...
Committee, yes.
Committee. And I'd like for you, if you'd be so kind, as to comment on the costs and the benefits of the finance bill and the banking bill. Pleasure.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. It's a, it's a very important question. Those bills are wrapped up together. The financial service bill, which is the Frank Dodd bill, which the president just signed, it doesn't make credit more available and it doesn't increase access to credit. In fact, does the opposite. And that delay that the gentleman asked about, about an incomplete bill, the regulations are being written on how derivatives contracts are traded and how business, how banks can invest our money that we put on, on deposit with them and what they can do with that money. It is a far-reaching bill and it doesn't deal with what actually created the financial And that's an analysis by Republicans and Democrats. A Democrat who's the head of the FDIC and a Republican who's the head of the FDIC, they wrote a piece together and said, this bill would not stop the financial, the fiscal crisis, I'm sorry, the financial crisis that we just had. So, it, it doesn't solve the problem, doesn't fix the problem. And in some ways, you look at the, you look at this bill, it adds bad regulation on top of bad regulation. And it wasn't a lack of regulation that got us into this crisis. It was bad, it wasn't a lack, it was bad regulation. Clearly, there were huge excesses, right? And part of that was because they didn't actually have to disclose their contracts and I think they should. This bill doesn't do that fully. Finally, this bill doesn't do anything to reform Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac, which are, which are Congress, congressionally approved, legislated corporations that were able to share profits with the, with shareholders while at the same time socialize their debt or when they, or their incompetence. And we're paying for their incompetence and bad legislation that put them into existence and bad legislation that actually didn't regulate them. We didn't regulate the government sector and it had bad regulation for the private sector. That's, that's my view of this big bill. But I'd be happy to talk to you more about that. Yes, sir. Last question of the night.
My name is Dave Henning.
Oh, one more over here, sorry.
Living in Lenore.
Yes.
And I moved here about 12 years ago, from Arizona. All right, I was six years in Arizona. I worked for a communications company. I was a card-carrying member of CWA, Communications Workers of America. Became disabled and I'd like to know where the healthcare bill is going to put me. Because right now, my company is, has paid my bills, paid my family's medical bills. I've got a $5 copay. I've never had to pay a dime for my social security, you know, that I draw from social security. A company reimburses me on that. I'd like to know where I stand when, when this healthcare bill really goes into effect. Because my company right now doesn't, doesn't even recognize that bill.
Thank you for the question. Sorry, didn't go through that, but I'm telling you. I'll give you the most honest answer I can give you. I do not know. But I will also say this. I don't know that it's knowable at this point because they haven't written the regulations.
Can we go back to that gentleman? Would he have your files?
Yes. But if I can talk to you afterwards, get your information, get your background, all the information, so that as regulations come out, we can tell you where it is and monitor the situation.
Or you call the doctor's office, and you go through a 10-minute voice tree where it could be a person that you actually talked to. And then you get somebody that says, "Oh, ah, we're sorry, our systems are down, we can't tell you when your appointment is, or change your appointment, or give you an appointment." And if, like I said, if you follow this all the way up the line, you put a lot more people back to work. And I know probably everybody in here's got a computer, it goes on Facebook, it goes online, and does all kinds of stuff, and we're going out online, but to me, the computer eventually is gonna be the biggest thing that causes our demise.
Michael, I wanna introduce you right now. So, Small Michael here, Tiny Baviak, Michael Baviak, who's my new media director, just about lost his mind when he said that. Okay. But, yeah. Yes, sir? Final question, comment of the night.
It's, uh, thank you, actually. I'm Gerald Bragg, living in Denny.
Good to see you again, Gerald.
We've, Gerald.
I'm sorry, Gerald, I'm sorry.
Yeah, veteran.
Yes.
Quite retired, and trying to stay that way. I, for a while, was going to Fort Bragg twice a month, thanks to the army, who said they wanted to see me. When in my retirement, it said I didn't have to. Y'all fixed that. Thank you.
You know, it cost an Uncle Sam $400 bucks a month each trip I had to make.
Oh, really? Well, thank you. Thank you, Gerald. And Joanna Brow, in my office, I'll make sure to relay your thanks. And thank you for your service.
You're welcome.
So, we're at the end of the night. I wanna take a moment to introduce my staff that's here. I've got a lot of them here, almost all of them, but I wanna make sure I introduce them because, you know, whether it's Joanna, or others in my office, make everything kind of go. And we try to answer as many questions as we can and, and help people. Brad, he's my northern regional director, represents me in the southern five counties of the district. Laurie Moody, behind the computer, waving over there, is my northern regional director, represents me in the northern five counties, including Caldwell County, and has been involved in the chamber in the DDC here. James Craftle is next to Laurie, is our intern that's helping organize all the town hall meetings this August, and he's a little grateful that the town hall meetings are not quite as big as last year. Nancy Meek, who deals with social security and Medicare, Medicaid issues, and housing issues, and is my senior constituent service liaison in my Hickory office. And David McCrery, who is the head of constituent casework and, and works in the Hickory office as well. David has forgotten more about immigration than I'll ever know, and, and the flaws in the system. Did we cover everybody? Oh, and I introduced Small Michael, who's there. I wanna, just take a moment. I appreciate your feedback, I appreciate your input, I appreciate your guidance. I try to make sure that I keep in mind your values and how you would vote when I vote in Washington. And I've gotta answer to you, but at, at the end of my time, I've gotta answer to my maker. And, and I keep those things in mind every time I walk on the House floor, and every time I cast a vote. And thank you for the opportunity to represent you. I, I certainly appreciate it. We're going through challenging times, but I know we can work together and make a change, make a difference. Thank you for the opportunity to serve, thank you for your help, and thank you for your prayers. God bless.